Good evening. Want to welcome everyone to the August 2018 Regular Town Council Meeting. Today's date is August 21st, 2018. Meeting is called for 7:00 PM at 7:04. Meeting officially called to order. Roll call, Town Clerk, please.
Mary Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mandell. Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Rojas.
Here.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Okay, want to welcome everybody. Hope everyone had a great summer. If we could please rise and Chief, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today, please? Can everyone please face the flag and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, nice turnout this evening. Again, I want to welcome everybody. First on the agenda are some presentations. And we're fortunate tonight to have the representatives of the North Miami Beach Water Department here. We've got here, if you can introduce yourself, I've met you for a presentation.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Hafad Bais and the Deputy Director of NMB Water. So with me also tonight is Alvin Colbert, who is the Customer Service Office Manager, and also Leonard Skrogin, who is our Operation Maintenance and Customer Service Top Rank Manager. So they are here with me also because we want you to meet them also during this presentation. So I want to excuse first our director, Jeffrey Thompson. Tonight he is in the North Miami Beach City Commission Meeting. And as you already know, these days we're talking about the budget for the next three years. So in any moment, he could have some question about the budget for the next three years. So for that reason, tonight he's in the meeting with the City Commission back there in North Miami Beach. Also, I want to let you know that these two gentlemen here, they are great employees. They are great professionals. They work for North Miami Beach, specifically with NMB Water. Both they work or they are employees for a firm called Jacobs. Since summer 2017, NMB Water decided to go and to have a contract after a competition between others' companies and consultants, firms. And after the process, it was decided to give the contract for Operation Maintenance and also for the Customer Service Office to CH in those days. Right now, they are Jacobs. During the past months, CH was bought by Jacobs. So that's why CH today is Jacobs. So we got a group of professionals working with us. We are happy to have them with us and they are doing a great job for us. But we need to let you know that the assets, NMB Water assets, the utility is city-owned. It's proper to the city of North Miami Beach. It is under the Department of NMB Water. And there are four employees, full-time employees of the city of North Miami Beach that we take care of it. We oversee the contract and we look everything that is happening inside it. Jacobs do not take any decisions in anything regarding water increases or any other thing, for example, projects. Anything is better to us and through other city officials of North Miami Beach. So I want to let you know that because this is very important to us. So I don't know if you have any question at this point to start the presentation, but so... Sorry, I need to ask, do I manage the presentation from here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's already, yeah, you just had to hit the arrow.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So yesterday, I had the opportunity to meet your manager. Here, I have a meeting with him. He brought to me a few concerns. He also had the opportunity to talk with Jeffrey Thompson, January Jeffrey Thompson, and he also explained some of the concern that you have. So part of the purpose of this meeting is to bring to you some answer to those questions or to any other question that you have for us. So about the meter locations, we need to say that all meters are sealed and will work for me. No issue with portable water quality, no, and the meter relocation or change in elevation are customer responsibility. What that means is if for any reason we have any situation with the meter or the meter box that for any reason complicate operation or maintenance of the meter or interfere with the emission of the transmission of the reading of the meter, then we need to step in and fix it, okay? But if that is not the case, it's not part of the budget to see it that way. And we do not have any money allocated to change any elevation or change any location of any meter if they are working properly. So about this slide, if you have any question, you can make it.
So one of the concerns that our residents have is when they look at their meters, they're submerged or there's water in there. So I guess by your presentation, you're saying that doesn't affect the reading or the ability. Is there a program in place for NMB or Jacobs to go through and maybe raise meters so they're not submerged? Because one of the issues that we have as a community is what submerged meters, we fear that they become breeding grounds for mosquitoes. And so because there's a dip where the meters are, we see throughout the town water sitting in your meter boxes. And as you know, not only mosquitoes, but there's frogs and other things that grow inside of those dark climate areas. Is that a resident responsibility? Is that a town responsibility or is that a utility responsibility?
The question is fair. So if you could see the presentation, in the first slides...
Keep it on the slide.
Okay, there, thank you. There's two samples of some cover of the meter. If we have the cover, basically, it's very difficult that a frog or an insect or something could go inside it. Also, even for mosquitoes, it's difficult to go inside it. So usually, the water that could be inside could be, it depends, the tide, the sea tides. But basically, it could be wreckage. It could be if there's some leak, we could have also some chlorine water because of the water leaks. Also, if it is rain, the water is going to permeate inside the water box. But it has to be our experience to see that we have seen in the past some growth of mosquitoes, some mosquito concern in other communities that we serve.
Okay, and last question on this particular matter. So the slide says that it's a customer responsibility, but do they have to work with North Miami Beach? Because we can't set our own meters, so...
No, you are totally correct, Manager. If for any reason you want to take care of this, we are in the position to assist in any way we could assist, with you identify the necessity. Because the problem is not with the 100% of the meter that we have in this community. Basically, it should be a fraction of it. So I don't know, 25% of it, 10%? So we could take care, identify those cases and help in the process in any way we can to make, I mean, any changes possible in the future. So during the conversation that we have with the manager, he said that there's some customers or some citizens from this town that they thought that we already increased the rates. And the answer to that is that there's no change in rates in 2014. Basically, at the same rates since 2014, no change in water rates.
Are rates going to increase now?
Now, not today, not now. We are in conversation with the City Council back there in North Miami Beach, with the POC Commission. Internally also, we are preparing our plan for capital improvement. So right now, we are in the process to plan that for the future. And of course, when we are ready with all the process that needs to come as part of it and better information with all the city officials, any consultant that we have, especially for finance stuff or for rate stuff, then we could come here and explain what is the future for the plan, the plan for the future, sorry.
Because the town manager and I heard this today that there was going to be an increase because apparently the rate that was being charged was the incorrect rate. Is that true?
It's not the rate. What happened is, we're talking about the fixed fee, monthly fixed fee that is in the ordinance, city ordinance, for water for residents. We're talking about small diameters, one inch, three-quarter inches residents. Basically, those residents, we were invoicing or billing them quarterly. Right now, we are going to change in the next month. That's what we are trying to do with the City Commission approval. We are going to change to monthly billing.
To what?
Monthly billing. We're going to change from quarterly billing to monthly billing. And when we change to monthly billing, during the process to overview everything, what is happening right now is our ordinance. Because our ordinance are from, we have like 54 ordinance inside what we call Chapter 19, everything related to NMB Water stuff. And those documents are, I mean, are, many of them are old and starts since 1950 until 1914, something like that. So we have a cumulus of documents that got many things together. So we engaged not just Jacobs, other consultant to start revising and doing the process and also with the work order that we have with Jacobs. Because we want to change to the monthly billing because we have a meter that is smart. We called that, we said that that meter is smart. And we want to change to the new billing system, software, that is going to be compatible with that smart meter. And having those company, because right now we have the smart meter, but we don't have the smart software. And we are putting in place the smart software. And we also are in the process to revise our ordinance regarding Chapter 19. So while we are doing all of that at the same time, basically, we discovered that during the past, I mean, several years ago, like 1979, sorry if I don't remember the exact dates, the city changed from monthly billing to quarterly billing. But when the city changed to quarterly billing, the rates that was applied to the resident, because that was done for resident, residential. When the fixed fee that was for those residents, they took like those amount of dollars, let's say $10, that were billed every month, they changed it to every quarter. So that $10 is no longer for month number one, fix it. I'm talking about the fraction of this. Month number two and month number three, 10, 10, 10. After the quarterly billing, it was changed to $10 every three months. And every three months, you have your reading and your rates against that reading and also just the $10. So basically, when we discovered that, because there's nothing in the ordinance in the city that changed that, let's say, on purpose. So because after we revised the ordinance and we see everything that was put in place during all those years of different ordinance, it was reached the conclusion that we need to, at the moment, we've come back to the monthly billing and provide the resident with the benefit of this smart meter and all the things that we could do with the smart software. At the same time, we need to correct, we need to fix that situation that happened in the past and start charging the, today is adding $10 and 71 cents. So 10.71, we need to start adding that 10.71, not quarterly, per month.
So there will be an increase?
Yes, but it's not the rate. It's that we're going to...
I understand, but there will be an increase.
So it's not really an increase, it's a correction. It's a correction. They intended to charge us $30 quarterly, but they only charge us $10 quarterly.
That's what happened.
So you're not going to go back? You're just going to go forward?
No, no, forward, not back.
So I have a question. Does Golden Beach have these new smart meters?
Yes. Yes, correct.
So you put them in?
Correct.
Am I right in understanding that one of the differences between now and earlier is that they're being read remotely?
Correct.
So I have a question about that. Because I went online and registered with North Miami Beach because there are times my bills are just seemingly ridiculous.
Okay.
I think it's called Civic Plus is the website.
That's already, Alvin, that's the name of the software, no?
It's an IT software, yes.
Yeah. So when I look, and it shows daily usage.
Correct.
And I can see, I watch it, and I see three days in a row, almost no usage. And the fourth day, it's like through the roof. And I follow my pattern and how we use water.
And you only take a shower once every three days.
There you go. I don't understand how...
Your question, Commissioner, is excellent. And during the presentation, I'm going to answer it. Because we have the capability to read it in the instant. Right now, have a reading in every house. Nonetheless, the problem that we have in this community, in this town, Golden Beach, is that we do not have an antenna, a communication, a small communication tower that could make possible for us to have that information for us and for you, I mean, at the instance.
So her reading is wrong, is what you're saying?
That's what I was just going to say to you. Then how do you get accurate reading?
Not necessary. In any case, for example, I need to say this, I mean, in any case, for any reason, any customer think you have any high bill in your hands, you need to inform us and we're going to take care and we're going to reach that point.
Well, we need your number because trust me.
That's going to be a...
But also in this presentation.
But the important thing for us to understand is that those readings, with the proper equipment in place, and we need an antenna, and we're going to talk about that tonight also. You're going to have that readings at the palm of your hands with any smart devices as your smartphone, your tablet, your computer. Right now, we do not have that capability. So right now, we do not have it. What we're doing is every once a month, we are driving by with a car and equipment that take that information from the meter and then we go and put it in our system. But you are going to be capable of have that information in an instant in your hand of actual reading in your house right now.
I can just tell you from experience, every time you call North Miami Beach and you tell there's an issue with the bill, their response is, well, you must have a water leak. Okay, that's their response. And they say you need to call a plumber.
That's...
So that's...
Can I follow up on that? Because I've had at least two occasions where I've actually submitted my payment with an invoice showing that I had a problem, a water leak, and I had to repair. And I was assured when I called Customer Service, okay, you do that, you'll get an adjustment. Never once got an adjustment. And I know that there's more people in town that have done the same thing with no results.
It happened to you, though?
Yes.
Okay. That's why I brought also this. I have to know all the answers.
Come on out of the box.
Okay, I can answer that question for you. Golden Beach has actually serviced sewer by Miami Beach. With your question, the readings that are coming in, when they do make it in, those readings are correct. The problem is just with the transmission. So those readings that come in are correct. From what I'm hearing from you, we really need to have someone take a look at your irrigation system. Because whenever you see that pattern, and that's a pretty consistent pattern, when you see that happen when you're using very little water and then all of a sudden you use a lot of water. In fact, I've got a case right now that I'm working on.
I don't want to interrupt your presentation, but when you say irrigation system, you mean when I turn my sprinklers on?
Sprinkler, yes.
I have to be honest with you. I don't. Because when I turn my sprinklers on, my bill is absolutely preposterous. I'm going to be honest with you. And you know what I started to do? I bought an oscillator. I screwed the hose into it and my water bills are not as low as they should be, but far less than if I use my sprinklers. I'm being honest.
And your sprinkler, you could have probably adjusted it because your sprinklers should save you money over the oscillator that you have. What I can do is this, and we've just done this recently with one of your citizens. I can do an onsite, have someone do an onsite visit with you, a consultation. We'll take a look at your system. Because what happens with sprinkler systems and with other things is, if you could see the water leak, you would know it is there and you would fix it. Where Florida is, you don't get to see that. With the sprinkling in, especially, because what happens, you've got solenoids underneath the ground. When your sprinkler is not working, it's not leaking because the solenoid is closed tight. Once it comes on, it can be leaking underneath the ground during the time that you're also sprinkling. In addition, you pretty much have to walk your site because you'll find instead of that mist that should be held to three, I want to say, .375 gallons a minute is what that should allow. But when the sprinkler head breaks, it will allow up to five, five to seven gallons a minute. And you'll never see it, especially if your sprinkler is on at night. You'll never see it. But by monitoring that system, we're able to see it.
Okay.
And so I'd be happy to have someone get with you and take care of that.
Do your presentation and we'll do questions. Otherwise, we'll never get through, yes.
Thank you. So looking at the future, one of the things we are going to do, we are going to revise or make an evaluation in the next three years about 30% of the infrastructure here. It's not because right now we have some problem. It's because it is, I mean, it's because of age of the infrastructure. So we start this process to evaluate it in order to, in time, find out if we have some problem and take care with it, to it, I mean, properly. So for right now, since August 2016, basically, we have two service line leaks and one water main repaired. So right now, we do not detect any issue with the infrastructure that is, like, let's say, is, I mean, we're having a lot of leaks or broken pies. They often, I mean, often or something like that. So right now, the three, in the next three years, basically to evaluate and be sure that we identify anything that could happen in the future on time to avoid any interruption in the service. Also, something very important, and this is part of what I was saying a few minutes ago, customers can set up alerts for initial usage pattern because part of the smart meter, in combination with the software, is that in your tablet, in your smart computer or smartphone, you could, with a new system that we're going to have in place in the next couple of months or the next month, we are going to be able, you're going to be able, to set the alerts that you want to set for your case. If you said, if for any reason my water bill goes beyond this threshold, I want the system to alert me. So if for any reason you have a leak in your house or whatever other situation that could be happening, or you just go to travel and your son or daughter go and make a party in the house or something like that. So you could detect the water and you could call and you could, I mean, look for the situation and address it on time. Of course, in any moment, after you do that, you need to call us. You need to call us. We are going to take care of it. We're going to visit you. We need to, if we need to visit you to revise any concern that you have and to properly manage it. So a smart meter. We invest $12 million in water meter replacement project. Customer can access water usage via internet with any smart devices. Currently, smart meter are installed basically in all of our customers. Sunny Al Beach, Miami Garden, North Miami Beach, Unincorporated Miami Dade County and Golden Beach. Customers from Golden Beach do not currently have the full functionality of a smart meter. Why is that and what we could do? Because of this, this tower. That's what we need in order to properly serve the city, the city of, the town of Golden Beach.
Who puts that tower in?
No, not yet. While we are planning to do it, we are in conversation with the manager. That was part of our conversation yesterday. And I know for sure that between the manager and us, we are going to resolve this and have this tower as soon as possible installed in the city in order for you to have the complete benefit of the system.
Mayor, Council, this is something we've been looking at for the last couple of years from a permitting perspective and from a site perspective. It's a pretty tall tower. It's a 40-foot antenna. We've currently identified either South Park, Singer Park, or the Strand Boat Dock as possible locations that the tower would best serve the community. Just yesterday, we were talking about possibly putting it on the north side of town, facing south so that it could read all of the meters. Their ideal location is South Park. And we're, we'll go through the process of making sure that it's aesthetically appealing to the neighbors who will be around that power. If we had taller streetlights in other communities, they affixed the reader on streetlights. Unfortunately, because our streetlights are not tall enough, even the new ones are not tall enough. It's not ideal for that. We did look at possibly on one of our facilities, but it's not tall enough either. So we'll get it permitted right away. We'll issue it through a public works permit and they'll install it. It's all at their cost and they'll deliver it so we can get the smart system up and running as soon as possible.
It's going to be in black color, so... The system, this is information for you. In order for you to know that in the system, we have some pressure locks. We also have some, what we call our IT meter system that has some leak detectors. So we know if we have some pressure decrease in the system or for any reason we have some leaks in the system, in the, basically in the pipes nearby meters, we could know if we have a big leak in the system. So we could take care of it in a basically short time. So we have leak detector in our system and also we have pressure detector to see if we have any problem in the pressure that we're, in our serving zones. And we want, this is very, very important for us, for you to know that we are here for you. We are here to provide a service to the town of Golden Beach. And we are proud of serving you. So here we have the, our customer service phone number. Also, in our site, NMB, www.nmbwater.com. You can see our site also and there you could have an opportunity to make any contact with us. Nonetheless, I'm going to leave also my ID card to the city officials in order for you to call me if you need something from us. Also, Leonard and Alvy are here because we are compromised. Our compromise with the city is totally from our part.
Mayor and Council and residents, it's also important to know that a couple of years back, we appointed Marie Tally, our Community Development Specialist. She is a liaison between our residents and North Miami Beach Water when you have thrown your hands up and are tired of trying to get a hold of a solution. So we always ask our residents to first work with NMB Water to try to resolve your issues. But if you hit a brick wall, and I know often you feel like you do, and we're going to try to work those issues with NMB Water moving forward, reach out to Marie. Marie is the one who answers our phone. Get her a copy of your bill and what your issues are. She then case manages that and then Mr. Glidden oversees that process to make sure that all of our customers have some kind of resolution. Sometimes the resolution isn't to their satisfaction, but at least we try to facilitate that. No other city really does that. It's part of our white glove service to our residents. So first, reach out to NMB Water at 305-948-2960. And if not, reach out to Marie at 305-932-0744.
Anyone else have any questions?
Let me ask, when there is a breakdown in the system, when something's broken, I've never had any success in ever basically receiving a refund or anything off of that. If there is a broken sprinkler head or something that's causing those leaks, is that something that the residents are responsible for or is that something...
For example, you have a problem in the irrigation system. Where it is the irrigation system and you have a problem in your system that something break in that infrastructure.
Prove me wrong.
We are not allowed to provide a credit for that. But we are allowed, for example, if you have a water meter and you, until this point, you also have connected to your water meter, your house water meter, you also connect your irrigation system. Not everyone has irrigation system apart. It's a good idea, but not everyone has it. If for any reason you have a problem in the same system, irrigation system, and we are counting in the meter the water, okay, because of that leak, and you, in the same bill, we are going to charge you the rate for the wastewater disposal. We could make a reduction with the information that you provide to us and have a credit for the water that do not go into the wastewater system. Remember, we here in Golden Beach, in our water bills, NMB water bills, also are included the, was the wastewater rates there. The amount of money that you are going to pay for your wastewater disposal is paid through our...
Yeah, one of the biggest misnomer in our community is that we get a water credit. You don't. When you have a leak in your system, you get a sewer credit.
Correct.
And so we have a relationship with NMB Water, who has a relationship with Miami Dade Water and Sewer. Our relationship is through NMB. We do not have a direct relationship with Miami Dade Water and Sewer. So when you have a break and you have that plumber bill, the onus is on NMB Water to try to get that credit from the county so that you can get that sewer credit. They have been very generous in the past in trying to get those credits to our residents and they've been successful in some cases. They have been very generous in the past in trying to get those credits to our residents, and they've been successful in some cases. I can tell you that the state and the county are getting more aggressive in not giving those credits, because there's still a cost of maintaining wastewater systems. And so the county's position has been, don't give us many credits, we have ongoing and growing capital costs. We had a conversation about that just yesterday. We'll continue to fight to get those credits, but know that the state's position is, water out of the aquifer system is water used, whether it's lost, whether it was because of a broken pipe or not, that water is a state resource that needs to be compensated for. And so the philosophy of giving credits for water breaks, that mentality has changed a lot over the last couple of years. There's still some leeway there, but it's, it's, it's something we have to manage and finesse in our relationship moving forward.
With the new smart system, typically, I wouldn't be aware of something until the bill came, like you said, it's quarterly, so sometimes things happen for a long time without us, at least me being aware, and I would assume other people. With the new smart system, is there going to be alerts? I guess you said you can actually put alert, but if, if there's something that's very abnormal, is that something that the system itself will pick up? And that, even if somebody doesn't put a preset on there, you might notify somebody of abnormal water usage?
I think we could do something general, if you want to do, for example, for, for the citizen of, of Golden Beach. Alvin, you have something else to mention?
There are four hundred and sixty-two customers that we have here. Typically, I take a look at the, at our leak system, but in order to get that alert that you need, that's one that you would set up. We'd be happy to work with all four hundred and sixty-two of the citizens to get that set up. And we'll, as Hafet was saying, we, we will soon have that in place.
I get alerts.
You get alerts, so you've already set, and it's a, it's great, I've had people call me and say, you know, I'm feeling like, he's telling me it's going to cost this much, and they watch and they're going to see it. We can set that alert, we'll help you set that alert, we'll help you get it set up, we'll give you all the tools that are necessary. We just don't have the resources to monitor the thirty-five thousand meters that we have.
Remote.
We can't, yeah, we're remote. So, but we, we will help you set up, whatever it takes, whatever it takes, however long it takes, we'll get it.
Thanks, Tom.
And my, my last question. When you set up for a certain alert, let's say that you want, you don't want it to exceed more than twenty percent from what you spent the last, the last monthly bill, I guess now. Is that going to do it on a proportionate basis, so like, if, if in the first ten days it's using greater, or is it going to wait till you actually exceed that bill by the, by that amount?
It depends upon how you set it up. You can actually set it up, say, I never want to use more than, more than this in a day. But typically, most people set up, I only want to use this in a, in a month. If it goes above this, send me the alert. But it's, it's quite intuitive, and we're actually moving, moving to an even better product shortly, that will give you even more flexibility.
Thank you.
I, I have one question, and it might be a stupid question, but I think it's a question that a lot of the residents have, and it might not be a question for the city of North Miami Beach, it may be a state or a Dade County issue. But, for example, I own two homes, one here in Golden Beach and one in unincorporated Dade County. The home in unincorporated Dade County, the quarterly water bill is a maximum of sixty-some dollars, whereas a minimum bill here in Golden Beach is six hundred dollars. And I know that a lot of the difference is due to the taxes and fees that we have as part of our bill, because we are not in the city of North Miami Beach. Who, is there any recourse to us to try and get some of those things lowered, and if so, who, who do we?
So, let, let me take a stab at that, and then Alvin, help me out. So, e- each, each water utility sets their own rates and sets their own billing. When you say taxes and fees, so the only, the only fee that the city puts on your water bill is your stormwater fee, and that's set locally here
Right.
by this council. So NMB...
Doesn't explain the discrepancy.
Yeah, NMB collects that fee for us. Now, in unincorporated county, if Miami Dade, if Miami Dade Water and Sewer is your water and sewer provider, they have very competitive rates because they have a lot more clientele in a, in a bigger system.
No, it's North Miami Beach. The bill is from North Miami Beach for both places.
If you're having, having a problem with that great a discrepancy, it's going to be a water consumption problem.
Everybody in town has bills that are approximately six hundred dollars and eighteen hundred dollars in Golden Beach.
I understand. I've had, within the last week, three citizens from Golden Beach that have made contact with me. When I took a look, they all say, I have no leak, there's something wrong. And we're in to go in, one of them was similar to yours. It turns out, we've got a sprinkler problem that's there. The other was a toilet flapper, that toilet flapper. When, when you think about it, you've got a, a two to three gallon tank that makes up in about thirty seconds. When that, when that goes, you end up using an awful lot of water. And those, they cost anywhere from three to ten dollars, but they can cost you hundreds of dollars a month, or per quarter, in your water.
Councilor...
I agree with what you're saying. I wish I had a bill in front of me.
Well, I was going to ask you that.
You could see...
Here's a bill.
Okay. So aren't there a lot of things that are not associated with water consumption?
Well, there's ta, there's taxes, there's the hundred and fifty dollar stormwater charge. There is.
When you take consumption, so when you take the consumption rate out, are you saying that there's, there's set fees in both bills that are just greater?
I think there are non-existent fees in the unincorporated Dade County House.
If you could just bring, why don't we do this, why don't you bring us a copy of each of the bills and we'll, we'll sit together and look at it? And then at the next council meeting, I'll give you enough details to what we found.
This bill I brought tonight is six hundred dollars. To me, this is livable compared to some of the, compared to some of the bills that I get, but I brought it just...
So, if you would give us a copy of both bills, we'll sit down together at the next council meeting, I'll give you a report.
I'm going to sign in for, you know, both accounts, and that way I can...
Please.
Any, any other questions from the public? Yes, sure.
First of all, well, my name is Rochelle Burina, four one seven, Old Uni Charge. I want to thank you all who asked really my questions mostly, but I do have one more for gentlemen. I understand that if it's an inside leak, you look at it one way for credit versus an outside leak. Because an outside leak, it's leaking out into the yard as opposed to something that was a toilet...
That's correct, for, that's correct. For example, you have, you have your regular water meter for your home, and between your water meter and going inside your home, you have a leak that is going to move the meter.
Right, but I have a leak that was incurred outside, but it was from my inside of my house. It's not, it has nothing to do with the irrigation system, but I ran up a twenty-six hundred dollar bill.
If, if for any reasons that happened to you,
Yes, and it's...
and information is, is bring to us, we are going to take...
It's sitting with Gil right now.
Yeah, we are going to take care, because in, because remember, in that particular case, that the water never go into the wastewater system, we could make, on time, we could make, and, and, and put a credit. The problem is, when we have that situation, because sometimes, every, we have so many areas, and, and basically, many different ways to deal, specifically speaking, the wastewater provisions or part of the system, service that we provide, that here is a pass-through. If for any case, we, you do not inform us that on time, in the short time. And then, using that reading of that meter, we issue invoice to Miami Dade County, to the WASD. If we pay Miami Dade County, basically, we lose the, the opportunity to really provide you a credit. That's why time is very important here, in order for us to give a credit if the water never goes into the wastewater system.
And as Judy was saying, we have been monitoring, I monitor my water too. I didn't see a problem, because it wasn't reported properly. I've been in touch with Gil, our system is not reporting, so therefore, I thought everything was fine until I get my bill, and then she tells me...
And that, that's, that's going to be fixed, yes. That's going, that's going to be...
But in the meantime, I feel like, you know, in other residents, I'm sure too, we couldn't do anything to fix that, to be proactive, to get ahead of it, because we didn't know about it.
So...
Until the bill.
Yeah, I understand that.
Maybe we'll go with it, and now I have your, your parts on the work, but...
If Gil has to speak things.
Okay, well...
I have a question. If you change from monthly to monthly billing, is that going to mean that now everyone's got to must to get in touch with you so that they, I mean, that, that kind of squeezes our period, our time that we have to, to get...
Yes, but...
And it's only, I don't know, while we're going to talk about this, like, we just kind of, for nine hundred and fifty dollars, normally, it is about six hundred.
But, with the benefit of, of the monthly billing, also, we are going to have the benefit soon of, in order for you to have the information of your readings at your, at your hands. What we could do in the, in the meantime, we install the antenna, the, the communication tower that we need to install, probably, as we need to increase the time, our drive-through here with our equipment in the car, we need to do it weekly or something like that more often, until we resolve the power situation. So we need to talk about that. What we could, we could increase those visits here in our vehicle in order to capture the information of your, of your water meters.
I'm also just going to mention one last thing. I went through the normal process, talking to your representative, I filed my complaint. You couldn't get somebody out here for like two or three weeks, and I continued to run whatever the so-called water problem, so. And I make personal business, I don't just wait on the phone call. I'm like down in North Miami Beach, and know them, very, very well, like, I know them all.
If I had a, I'd like to see the case, because what happens, my guys actually don't do the repairs. My guys do the reading, we go up and consultation, go out where we can. I can tell you if you've got a leak that's there, and it's a service that is still on your side, if it goes through the meter, it's the customer's responsibility. We still will help consult, but if there is a mainline break, same guys that do that, so that sometimes, they just don't take any risks.
Between one guy who came out and said, oh, look, I can't do anything with it, I'll have to call somebody else, and then the other person, you know, two more weeks go by.
I will have your permission for it today.
You will.
Thank you.
Despite when they're all very nice people there, I have to say, I'm not, you know, it's just the system, we have to deal with it, but everyone's been very nice.
Any, any other questions?
So, Monica Mesa, six six two, you're there. I actually have a question, where our trash cans were above our meters. So, I guess when you guys were coming around, they were covering, and the remote wasn't able to access the meter system. So, that may be also a way that, that they're not reading correctly. I don't know if that's true or not, that's what we were told, to move our tanks if they were on the meter, so, that could be an issue.
There also could be underwater too, I learned that.
Yeah, that's correct.
My meters happened to be...
That's correct, they are prepared to, they are designed for that, to be underwater, if, if that the case, yeah.
Doctor, you have a question?
This is Dr. Rube, six nine eight, North Island. I'm extremely upset, how are you? I've been working with you guys for almost a year since I noticed this whole process. And it's unusual that all of us have leaks in our houses. I mean, you know, that's very inappropriate to accuse us to say that we have a leak. I had a leak expert come to my house, I had, I think Kennedy, Mr. Kennedy, come to our house, and we don't have any leaks. And still, I have bills that are three times as much since a new program got set up into the system. We used to have the old electric, and now, I mean, the old, and now we have the new one.
Your turn.
Can you finish, please? I, I waited for you.
Okay.
And for me to pay, you know, over a thousand dollars every three months, electric bills, it's not fair. Okay, I'm not here to subsidize, and none of us are here to subsidize you guys, but we pay what we use, and that should be the fair thing. And I tried to call, and we had very nice conversations with you guys, but nothing gets resolved. And you say that the electric meters are the perfect thing, and as you can see, you know, it's not the perfect solution. And if it's one person, it's a different story, but it's many people in our city that we have in...
See, it seems like everyone's water bill over the last six months have gone up, and you're telling us the rates haven't gone up, and I don't think people's usages have gone up that dramatically.
Well, first of all, when you see that difference, when, when you see the difference in your quarterly or monthly billing, when, when you, when you saw it, when you saw it? Summer two thousand seventeen, since two years ago?
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
I recorded it, in November, I called, we had the trinkle sprinklers, I called last...
You called right after the last hurricane.
On September of last year, okay, and I have all this documentation that I called, I contacted your city of North Miami Beach. I mean, everybody, what is your name? I'm sorry.
Hafet Bais.
You're not the main person, Patrick Kennedy is the main person.
The main person is the mayor.
Okay, no, I know, but we're talking about city of North Miami Beach.
If you're talking about NMB Water, it's Jeffy Thompson, he's the director.
We, I have never able to speak with him. I asked to speak to the director many times, and I signed up with the Itron meter, so I can see what my water is, usage is, and it's, it's uncalled for. It's really, something is not right from your side, because it's not just our side. I mean, I had a leak expert come in, and I don't have any leaks. Yesterday, Sunday, I put blue ink on my toilets to see if, if it leaks, there's no leak, and then you're reporting me every day that I have a strong leak. I called today, emailed Mr. Robert, I forgot his last name, Arabic.
Who?
Arabic, yes, and tell him all the problem, because you're sending me emails telling me that I have leaks. And I don't, and I have a problem with these issues.
Okay, if you allow me, listeners, what I, what I would like to do is to take all the citizens concerned, the one that are here, or the, or the one that we could have tomorrow, personally, I'm going to take care of it. I already visited your town one ti, one time, like, two or three months ago. We have a similar case where we told this customer that, a resident from, 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 from Golden Beach, that he had a water leaks in that case, I'm talking about that case. And he don't feel comfortable with our response. So, because it continued to rise, it reached my, to my attention, and I said to the resident of Golden Beach, I'm going to visit you with my staff. And we came here, we visited that case, I personally was here, and we made the test in front of, of, of the customer. Also, he, he brought his wife, he brought other person with him. That's good, that's good. So, at that moment, we could demonstrate, demonstrate there, because the meter, if you, with the meter, you could see, if you have anything close in your house, and let's say that you closed your shut, your shut valve that go to your house after the meter, the meter is supposed to be stopped, and if the meter is stopped, and then you open, and you have everything closed, I mean, any faucet, any whatever that could be, asking, demanding water from the house, you've closed it, the meter is supposed to be standing in the same position. If for any reason it start marking again, some water usage, mean that there's a leak in the house. But I made this commitment with you, with the, with the city of, of Golden Beach. In any cases, we are going to evaluate them with the data that we have, but also, I'm going to come here to visit each case.
Can I just say one more thing? I know we, we could talk about this all night. And I speak for myself, but I honestly think that I'm speaking for the majority of residents, because it makes, like Dr. Rube said, one quarter, a bill will be six hundred dollars. The next quarter, a bill will be twelve hundred dollars. The following quarter, the bill will go back down to six hundred dollars. With no work being done, no plumbing issues happening, there can be no leak, otherwise, it wouldn't be down, high and down again, and it's not just...
You're correct, it's supposed to be, basically, constant.
It is consistent throughout the town. Every resident has the same issue.
But, if you provide, sorry. That's, that's why you're here too.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Alvin's jumping out of the...
You just stated the, the normal pattern, if you watch water utilities throughout the country, that's exactly what happens. The water, because water is largely determined based upon our lifestyle.
I'm saying, given no changes, given no dras, drastic changes in life style.
No drastic changes, it, it happens because what we're, what we're doing in the warmer months, we don't think we're doing more, but in the warmer months, we do. That pattern, before I took a look at Golden Beach, when I was asked to do that, I came in and immediately, like, I said, well, I could show you, this is what your, your water use is going to look like.
Double?
And it doesn't matter what, it does not matter what city we're in, you can be in Alaska, it does not matter. Throughout, it's a W. When I take a look at, at Golden Beach, we've got that W. That's exactly, that's the pattern that water use follows. It really does. And I know it's, I know it's one of those things where it, it looks odd, but because you're getting billed quarterly, it looks more dramatic for your bill, because you've been billed quarterly. If you were going monthly, it wouldn't be as dramatic.
I think to a, to a certain extent, that's true, because in the summertime, I do have to put more water in my pool. There are, and it, it does probably add up. I agree with Councilwoman Rojas, though. The variable is just so, it peaks so high and then so low.
Mayor, why, why don't we do this? Yeah, so if there's issues, because we can talk about this, we have a long agenda, this is the first item on the agenda. We appreciate you coming, and if, the residents that want to talk to them, if... We appreciate you coming and if, uh, the residents that want to talk to them, if, uh, after this, they can go outside and give your name and their address.
Let me just, I want to summarize for the residents who are both in the audience and watching at home. So, a couple of things that are very important to keep in mind. One, the city of North Miami Beach Water is a utility that services the town. We have no influence or control over them. So, when they're debating issues like rate increases or capital projects that need to be enacted, you need to pay attention to your water bill because they're required to put a notice in there on when the city of North Miami Beach's city council is having hearings to determine rate increases. We have zero influence or control over rate increases. This evening, we heard that there may be a potential rate increase coming because there are some capital needs that are, that are going to be needed for their system. So, pay attention to your bill, number one. Number two, we heard that we're probably going to be implementing, not the city, but the utility is going to be implementing monthly billing. That's not set in stone yet. It's had, they're not rolling it out yet, but there may be in the future where our bills become monthly bills instead of quarterly bills. Number three, if you have a personal issue, your water consumption is high, your bill seems to be out of control, contact them directly. If you can't, uh, find a resolution, then contact the town.
I disagree with you. I mean, all of us are having problems. It's not a personal thing. This is not a personal thing. We have to have a city to back us up, to help us out. I can be paid.
I was getting there, Doctor.
Only six hundred dollars, fifteen hundred dollars. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you need to help us as a city mayor, as a city manager, to, to help us because we already tried this for a year and he has not resolved the problem.
So, where, where I was going is, i- if you're having a hard time with North Miami Beach, open a file with us, with Marie Tally. Marie will personally, uh, take your file, will work it through the system, define individual solutions to individual problems. It seems like there, it seems like we're, we're having a, an issue of some homes having rate increases, a behavior pattern with rate increases. So, let us work with NMB Water to find a solution on those individual cases, like Dr. Rube, yourself and others in the audience. Let us get involved because typically when we're involved, there may be a sense of urgency from that, from North Miami Beach to resolve the matter because they don't want to see us escalating. I hope that's not the case with all of our clients, but we'll help you with that process. And know that irrespective of, irrespective of whether or not the, the city is involved or not, you should have a resolution that is satisfactory or an explanation that is satisfactory as to why your bill is the way it is. We will endeavor to get a win-win for everyone. Just work with both my office and with, with their office. Um, I know that ever since Jacobs took over, there's been a, a need to try to strengthen the facilities, make the process better and enhance the customer service experience. Know that they're working on that and we'll work on that with you as well.
One, one other comment. Why would you switch from a, to a, from a quarterly to a monthly?
Cash flow.
I would think quarterly would be easier to maintain.
Basically, many of the customers, in general speaking, probably not here, but many of the other customers want to go, especially also North Miami Beach. Customers want to go to monthly billing.
But I would think it would be more effective, more efficient if you're doing a quarterly.
Mayor, when you look at the demographics of their, of their customers, and I can speak to this because I, I was at Water and Sewer. So, the demographics of the North Miami Beach Water and Sewer customer lives month to month paycheck, the paycheck. So, for them, it's easier to go to a monthly billing. Also, from a cash flow, cash flow perspective for the utility, having that cash flow come in on a monthly basis versus quarterly makes it easier for debt financing for them. So, I, am I missing the, that's exactly the point. So, it may not be the case for Golden Beach, but for the majority of their customers, that's, that's, it's actually a big incentive for them.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I do have one last, I'm sorry. Can we get a commitment for North Miami Beach? They said they have an, an analysis that they can do individually on each home.
Of course.
Sure.
Of course, Major.
I think we heard that this evening.
Especially Dr. Rube, myself and the people here.
No problem with that. That's part of the service.
Do it within two weeks or three weeks, not next year.
And here's, this is important for those of you watching at home. Um, don't wait for these type of meetings. If you have an issue, you contact Town Hall, put it on our list. We have an, an entire department devoted to helping our residents with all these type of issues. Don't wait for this. You know, i- if there's a red flag at your home, uh, whether, whether it be your utility bill or your light bill, let us know to see how we can help.
Can, when can you commit to the, the people that are in this room right now?
We're going to get that, we're going to get, we're going to compile a list for them. We'll case manage it to them. Let them know. Uh, Michael, let's make sure we have everyone who's in this room who has an issue. If you want to specifically talk to them, I'm sure they're going to stay in the hallway for a few minutes. They'll take your information, but we'll follow up with them as well.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the.
Thank you guys. All right, let's move right along on the agenda. We have a long agenda this evening. First on the agenda is recognition of the police officer of the quarter. And, uh, today, we are very fortunate to welcome David Guzman. Uh, Officer Guzman has demonstrated his devotion to law enforcement while safeguarding our citizens and their properties. Officer Guzman provided his courage, proved his courage while in duty, while responding to a house fire in town. Officer Guzman, upon his arrival at the residence, observed smoke coming from inside of the house. Immediately made contact with one of the homeowners who was outside of the house. The homeowner advised she did not know whereabouts of her husband or where the smoke was coming from. Officer Guzman, without hesitation, proceeded to enter the residence and attempt to locate the other resident. Officer Guzman searched the home until it was no, it was, uh, no longer safe for him to be in there. Fortunately, the resident has made it, had made it outside safely through the rear door. We're very fortunate and able to depend on our officer, of our police department to protect our safety of our lives. And Officer Guzman's self-sacrificing act is a pivotal, uh, example of hard work they do for the safeguarding of the town. This is why, uh, Officer Guzman is recognized as Officer of the Quarter for the third quarter of two thousand eighteen. Congratulations. Congratulations. And we have this evening, it's pinned for you, and the certificate of appreciation. Your new Chevy Tahoe's out front. Thank you very much. We appreciate your hard work and congratulations. Thank you. Uh, also, uh, this evening, we're very fortunate to have the Officer of the Quarter and I'm proud.
Employee, employee of the quarter.
An employee of the quarter, excuse me. And I'm proud to announce that the employee of the quarter, uh, this quarter is Chief Rudy Herbalo. Uh, the chief is, if you can come up here, chief?
Herbello.
Oh, my God.
Herbello.
Herbello. The chief joined the town January two thousand and eleven. After retiring from the city of Miami, he joined our team as a command staff member, which quickly got him to work on, uh, making vast improvements to the police department. Uh, one of his first tasks was to bring a culture of high ethical and professional standards. As such, he led the accreditation process that brought our first accreditation to the town of Golden Beach, which we're very proud of. He also, uh, when it was time to hire a police chief, after an extensive, exhausting search process, we found a potential right in our hometown and we hired, uh, the chief. He has proven himself time and time again to be a valuable asset and a great leader to the members of the police department. When, uh, we saw an increase in crime activity in town, the chief immediately took action to halt it. We have seen many creative and exciting programs in the police department under the chief's charge. And, uh, these past few months, Rudy has truly showed that his priority is to the, to the residents and to the staff is, uh, obviously, safety. And I, along with the coun- council and the staff, cannot be prouder and look for many more years for you to be our, our leader and our, uh, commander in the police department. And congratulations.
I'm very humbled. You know what? I, I got here, um, twenty eleven and, you know, the, the council member, the manager opened the doors for me and, um, uh, you know, they, they, they became my family. You, you became my family. And it's about pushing that gap between the police department and the resident. And we're here to serve you. And I'm very proud to be here and it is very humble.
Congratulations. And your new car is the police truck vehicle.
Mayor.
And the check's in the mail.
Mayor, if I could just briefly, Officer Guzman, I'm sorry I wasn't in the room when you were recognized. I could tell you that, um, it's been, it's been an honor to see you grow into the role that you've grown into. Um, Officer Guzman, uh, joined us not so long ago, but I can tell you that he's been very proactive, very professional, extremely courteous. Uh, you, you, he never has a bad demeanor. Um, I know that he, he loves working here. Uh, the mayor can attest that he, he's an overall great person. Uh, he's a former, uh, service member. Um, it's always good to see service members join our, our ranks. Um, Chief Herbalo, um, you know, you know how much I care about uh, the work that you've done for our community. Um, it's been, it's been rewarding to see you grow into your role. I could tell you that the mayor and I were a little bit nervous when we first appointed you, um, because we, you know, we didn't know what we were going to get.
Sure, when I hired him.
Very, very true. And, and, and look, I could tell you that, um, we've seen a lot this summer come from your office and, and from our staff. Our, our men and women who serve the community, you see them smiling. They're energetic. They're happy. You promoted, you know, all of your command staff. You've chosen your leadership team. I think you've done a great job, um, in promoting the sergeants that we have and the lieutenants that you've promoted. Um, we're going through the re-accreditation process. By the way, that's next year. We're going through that process already now. Uh, I know that you check all of our standards. Uh, I read all the emails that you send your staff. Please stop sending so many of them. But I know that you keep them on their toes. Um, and, and for that, and for many other reasons, the mayor and I felt that it was important to recognize you tonight. Uh, and so, congratulations. Lead on and continue to, to be the goodwill model of the R.F. Amendment Woman.
Thank you.
And for those officers in the room this evening, thank you for the service that you provide our residents day in and day out. Continue to do a great job. Um, we thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next on the, uh, presentation is our town flag. Uh, we ditching that?
Yep.
Okay. I was kind of proud of that flag, but anyways. Uh, next on the agenda is item number E, motion to set agenda, additions, deletions, removals from items from the consent agenda or changes to the agenda. I have none. Counsel? None? Staff?
Uh, Mayor, this evening, we put two, uh, uh, items on the dais. They're substitute items. Um, when we get to those items on the agenda, um, the town attorney will read what the changes were. There were two, uh, two changes to item number resolution five, twenty-five sixty-six and twenty-five sixty-three. So, the corrected item will be on the, uh, website. And like I said, the town attorney will read into the record the changes that we had.
Perfect. Uh, next on the agenda is.
Mayor, I'm, I'm not done. Sorry. There's also another item that we need to add to the agenda, um, and it's, uh, your appointment to the building advisory board. Um, it's not on the agenda, so under Mayor's report, we'd like to add, uh, an appointment of, uh, a member to the building advisory board. With that said, that I'm ready to set the agenda.
I'll do that in the my report.
That's right.
Perfect. Okay, uh, with that, we'll go into Good and Welfare. Anyone present for Good and Welfare?
Um, no.
Yes. Uh, the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group, Daniel Block.
So, hi, I'm Daniel Block and I'm a member of the Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group and I will be talking on behalf of the group. We started a community garden a couple of months ago and it's really been a great success and we just wanted to talk about some of the success we've had. We brought with us some of the vegetables that we harvested this week. We made a fresh pesto with the basil. We also added pasta and stuff and then we're serving with some tomatoes that we harvested as well. So, we're looking forward to continuing the garden next, uh, like October or so when we can replant. It'll be cooler, so we should get a lot more varieties, fruits and vegetables next time. But overall, it's really looking great. We have some photos of the garden if you'd like to see them as well. This is some of the tomato plants. You can see that it's taking great, I mean, this photo. You can see there's almost no space. It's all greenery. We had corn plants growing as tall as me. It's just really been a great success and we're hoping to keep it going.
I have to congratulate you guys because I would have bet anything that that was not going to be. The town manager and I talked after the meeting and we figured that no one would take care of it and it was going to just spray a bunch of weed. So, congratulations and a job well done to Judy Anderson.
Because you two felt that way, we put a little extra spider, okay, in your vegetables because you really did give us a tough time.
Congratulations and a job well done.
If you ever wanted to expand it, there's plenty of room there for expansions.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, am I hearing this?
As long as I'm not taking care of it.
I felt like, you know, you were telling us, okay, you can have the dog, but you have to walk it. You have to clean up after it.
That's very true.
You're true to your word.
I am.
You guys did a great job. Congratulations. It's a feather in your cap. Any other, thank you so much. Any other Good and Welfare?
No.
No? With that, we'll keep the, uh, meeting moving right along as we get served this delicious vegetables from our Golden Beach Garden that we're very proud of, that I knew would work. First, uh, some people have been asking me about if there's an update on the civic center and the master town hall. There is no update as of yet. Uh, I, I said before the summer, uh, I will bring something, the town manager and I are going to bring something to the residents and the council to start us off in the October meeting. So, uh, we, we have a presentation planned in October for what we anticipate or what we're looking to do. And that is only a discussion item, uh, at that time. I want to welcome everyone back from the summer. I can't urge and re, uh, reinforce and remind everybody that school has started. So, please, when you're driving down Golden Beach Drive, please obey the stop signs and obey the speed limits. And please look out for the children, especially from the hours of six-thirty to eight-thirty. Between the school buses and the residents carpooling, uh, there's a lot of traffic. And, uh, we need to make sure that, uh, that no situation occurs. So, please be cognizant of driving down Golden Beach Drive especially. Uh, over the summer, there's been an unfortunate situation with the ocean. Uh, there's been a few times where, uh, the water has been tested in Golden Beach and, uh, it's been, uh, came out negative. I'm, excuse me, positive for E. coli and some other viruses and some bacteria and we had to close the beaches. Uh, due to the fact we're a coastal community, it's been a major concern of mine. Uh, I wrote letters to the, uh, governor and to, uh, probably ten other governmental representatives and officials. Uh, I received responses from the Department of, of Health Department and the state of Florida. And it's a concern of theirs too. They are looking into, uh, the situation with our oceans and our waters. But again, that's a situation that's out of our control. It's a, a state of Florida issue. It's not a Golden Beach issue. So, I know people get upset when the beach is closed. Never happened before until this year. But, uh, believe me, the reason why we're doing it is for everyone's safety and hopefully it doesn't occur again. But, uh, based on, you know, talking to the, uh, officials, it may occur again as long as, you know, it's, it's hot as it is and the sun, the waters are as warm as it is. So, but don't think that it's, uh, gone unattended. And, uh, I am very on top of it, along with the town manager. And we are monitoring our waters and the town manager and his report is going to go over the fact that, uh, Golden Beach does monitor our own water. And, uh, we do test it, uh, and, uh, we try to keep the residents abreast of, thank you, of weather situation and what's going on with the ocean. The, uh, next thing I want to do is just give a little update on the CIP projects, uh, especially with our costs. As I said in the beginning of the summer, you know, our goal was to present, uh, these projects that we're implementing now uh, on a timely basis and within our budgeted amount. And, uh, I'm happy to announce, uh, that our budgets, all our projects are coming in within budget. Uh, some has taken a little longer than it, than we budgeted, but again, those were due to change orders and those were due to, uh, weather conditions that were out of our control. But the, uh, street lighting project, uh, this project was a three million dollar project. Uh, we've been working on it, uh, pretty much since two thousand and, uh, three. We spent of the three million dollars, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. A hundred thousand dollars came in a front, uh, in, came in, uh, in a grant that the town was awarded last year. Uh, we feel that the total cost of the restoration will be about three hundred thousand dollars. We've spent to date a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We have an additional cor- cost, uh, budgeted. We have an additional cost budgeted for about $44,000, and we feel this project's probably gonna take about six months to complete. So, our goal is no later than December 31st. It will be done before that, weather permitting, but that's our goal for the street lighting project. The beach pavilion renovation project, the budget was not to exceed $160,000. To date, we're at $120,000. We're $39,000 under budget. There is an issue with, that we're gonna talk about this evening, with the structure of the building. We may have to put in some, the engineer, the independent engineer recommended that we put in some additional support and rewire with rebar some of the support beams. That could estimate approximately cost about $40,000. We're gonna discuss this further later on in the council meeting. But that project was extended 60 days due to this, but it will be completed hopefully by the end of September, early October. The Tweedo Park enhancements, our budget was $98,000. Our contract came in at $70,000. And if you haven't taken a look at Tweedo Park, we put the covering on the playground. We've added some good amenities for both the younger kids and some of the older kids for workouts. I think the Tweedo Park came out really, really nice. The townwide canal maintenance project is ongoing. We originally thought it was gonna be about a $2 million project. We feel that we can deliver that project for about $500,000. We're gonna have some upfront engineering and some bid document preparation, which would cost about $160,000. But this project has been funded since 2014, and we should be able to deliver this project by the end of 2019. But it will remain within the budget. The townwide digital CCTV project, the cameras, that's all with Law Enforcement Trust Fund. That should come in within budget, $103,559,000. Our police gate is now complete. Our contract for that project was $284,000. With all the change orders and everything, the project ended up costing $283,000. That came in over $1,000 under budget. The beach pavilion restroom and amenities are completed. That project was $488,000, the budgeted amount. The contract came in with $420,000. We had change orders of almost $65,000, which comes in a total cost of $484,000. So, under budget for almost $4,000. The strand entrance is now completed. That budget was not to exceed $159,000. With change orders and everything, it came in at $146,000, about almost $13,000 under budget. Again, all these projects came in under budget and also at the same time, pretty much within our timeframe. And, you know, I can spout these numbers off all day long, but I have to give my hats off to the town manager and the staff, because if it wasn't for him and his staff staying on top of these projects and monitoring it, and I mean every day on top of these projects, these projects could've easily gotten out of control and gone over our budget. And, you know, we say when we do our capital improvement, our budgeting for the year, we try to maintain within our budget. And I think this last 12 months, we've done a phenomenal job coming in with all our projects, not only, like I said before, within our timeframe, but also under budget or at budget. And again, I commend the town manager and its staff. He's done a phenomenal job this summer, every day. He was on top of the beach pavilion, he was on top of the guardhouse, he's on top of the streetlights. We have a conversation every morning, we have a conversation every afternoon, Alex and I, with updates, and he knows exactly what's going on and where we are, both financially and timeframe-wise. So, again, hats off. I commend you guys, and a great job. We've also during the year had some additional maintenance projects that we've done. We have a list of it, from temporary cameras to new gatearms, to town hall surveying, which is street sign replacement, to repairing the old tiki huts, curb repair work done throughout town. If you noticed at the beach, we did the lifeguard renovation. The lifeguard now is, the stand is straight. We're gonna finish renovating even further. We installed new street signs along A1A on the ocean. We've staked out the ocean residents with the signs, not once, but twice during the year. We added additional turf, new tiki huts at the beach pavilion. We purchased new gaming and equipment for the beach pavilion. We did new landscaping for the beach pavilion, new, like I said, LED gatearms. We've added new irrigation, the guardhouse, and the beach pavilion. And we got a lot done. And again, all these projects came in within our budgeted amount. So, I'm very happy and very pleased. And again, my hats off to the town manager and the staff, because they did a phenomenal job on managing these programs. I know Alex wanted to add something.
Yeah, Mayor, two quick things. One, you know, you mentioned the word change order, and that's a big red flag to a lot of people. Typically, change orders are when you're not anticipating something. I can tell you that none of the change orders that we approved during this year's CIP project was a change order driven by the contractor. And let me say that again. Not one of them was a change order driven by the contractor. Every single change order that we approved this summer was a change order that I asked the contractor to enhance the quality of work that was being done. So, when we added more wood, or we added another tiki hut, or we added more grass, or we added more this, or another fan in the bathroom, every change order was a town-driven change order. So, it wasn't a, oh my God, they messed up and didn't do it right. It was, hey, you're looking pretty good, but we can make it look better, and so we're gonna authorize this. Or the roof is about to go, so instead of waiting five years to replace the roof, let's do it now. Which leads me to the item that we need to discuss briefly, and I think I've met with both, all of you on this issue. When we put out the pavilion restoration to bid, we only asked to replace all of our columns, because they were all echoing and spalding. We never contemplated replacing the corners of the building, the four corners. I could tell you that as we have been doing stucco work, we've noticed that all of the rebar inside of the four corners are completely gone. They've deteriorated. Councilman Luskin was out there with me, and she could tell you, it looks like a fossil bone of a dinosaur. You can see the layers that we keep on just putting new stucco on new stucco. So, our independent engineer has advised us that they recommend, because there is a cost savings with doing the work now, not in the future, they're recommending that we replace all four columns of the pavilion, not the center columns, but the four corners. The time is right, the price is right. So, what I'd like for the council, and we'll do it by voice motion, I'm asking the council to increase the town of Golden Beach Pavilion Restoration Project by an additional $30,000. That money will come from the town's park and recreation budget. As you saw earlier, there was a savings in the parks projects, so we're gonna take the money from the parks project and transfer it to that project budget. So, Mayor, a motion is always in order, and then a second and a vote.
I have to add to that. The independent engineer put us on notice that the structure he felt was unsafe. So, it's not just an aesthetic fix. It's a structural fix. So, you know, we would hate for something to occur, so we're trying to be proactive, and we're gonna do that. So, I'll make a motion to pass the approval. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Mayor, in addition to that motion, as you know, my spending authority only allows me to award work up to $25,000. The repair work for that structure is $38,335, so I'm asking for the council to make a motion to allow that change order. We're not waiving bid because it's a change order. We don't have to go out to bid or anything like that. We can task it. I just can't task work above $25,000. So, the council would need to make a motion to accept that change order, change order number one in the tune of $38,335 for the structural repairs at the beach pavilion.
Then why did you ask for 30?
30, because we have leftover money in that budget. So, we currently have a balance of 39,000, plus another 30 gets in 69,000. We have some other work that we're gonna be approving through change orders.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the increase in spending.
Change order number one.
Change order?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Thank you, Mayor. With that said, that's it.
One more item on my agenda is currently we have five residents that serve on the building regulatory advisory board. Mr. Hollow, Mr. Schiff, Mr. Mackin, Luciano, and Mr. Cone, and then we have an alternate, Ms. Helfman, and we appreciate all the work they do. But we were gonna add a, tonight I'm bringing to the council to add a new alternate, Judy Mamoun. Judy's been a resident, long-term resident of Golden Beach since 1993. She's been an active member of the community in partnership with her husband. They've completed a lot of both interior and exterior renovations to several homes in Golden Beach, and I think she'd be a tremendous asset to the building regulatory advisory board. I think with her expertise and her taste, will be a tremendous addition. So, I'm making a recommendation to add her as an alternate to the current five members that we have. Any of second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Congratulations to Judy Mamoun and to all the building regulatory members. We really appreciate all the hard work they do. It's an endless job. I mean, it takes up a lot of time, it's very time-consuming, and it's not always a favorable position when people, when they give their opinions, but someone has to do it, and they do a great job, and we really appreciate that. And I think Ms. Mamoun will be a tremendous addition, and I know she'll give it 150% and work extremely hard to continue the success of the building regulatory advisory board. So, with that, I'm gonna move on to council comments, and I'll start with Councilman Bernstein.
I just wanted to say, I thought you did an amazing job of summarizing everything. There's been so much that's happened in Golden Beach, and a lot of people coming back for the summer. I think the bacteria in the ocean has been probably my biggest concern and probably everybody's. And as the mayor said, we've done everything we can to try to deal with that situation. One of the things that's been most raised to me is the lights that are going on and the brightness with them. And as the mayor pointed out, we got a $3 million light system that we did not originally contemplate. It saved us money in the budget and saved the residents money. There's a lot of things we can do as this thing is being put up, and we can hear and listen to individual issues with it and adjust individual lights at certain times. But I think you need to be patient first and just let us put everything in and see how everything looks. I also wanted to talk a little bit more about the beach project, because a lot of people haven't seen it yet, which I'm ecstatic about. In addition to what the mayor said, they put in brand-new shower stalls, brand-new shower fixtures, and it's just, it's made it look like a club almost. I mean, it's amazing how well it's done, and Alex, council, everyone, staff, everyone that put in, it's just a great place. Also, they added in a fire pit, which I thought can soon be used, and I think the mayor mostly covered it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Luskin.
A couple of things. I'm getting a lot of feedback from the residents about the increased communication. The town has really done a good job. I mean, everywhere you look, whatever we're doing is being advertised, including, I think, at every stop sign on Golden Beach Drive on my way here tonight. There was a little sign out there reminding everybody that there was a council meeting. So, the communication has really increased tenfold. Also, I want to give kudos to Alex and Public Works. The town has really been clean. We're working really hard on keeping the town clean, and, you know, there's a great improvement, so thank you for that. And Public Works, for the first time this year, as long as I can remember, trimmed coconut palms, and I just want to say they worked really hard, all of them, especially Brian, because he was the one with the cutting machine, and his arms were always up there, and it wasn't easy, and they did a great job. As always, I think I say this every month, the chain link fence on A1A where you can look through to the basketball courts and to town hall, I'm really hoping that at some point we can put vines on there, because we're just, it's just a bad look. The food trucks, really, were very well-received this year. I don't know about anyone else, but it seems like everyone's getting used to them coming with their vouchers, and it's working very well. People are really appreciative. The entrance inn that the mayor just talked about is really beautiful. And I don't say this to be critical, but the fountains have the curved concrete where the fountains are. I think it looks a little sterile, and maybe we can plant a tree or two or something over there, because it's just these white, I mean, it's beautiful, but it just...
We're looking to put a decorative trim on it.
So, I'm not, you get where I'm coming from. Okay. I want to remind everybody that on September 16th, Sunday, is the 5K run. We have 28 people registered for it so far, and I'm sure there's gonna be a lot more. A lot of people register at the last minute. We've got more sponsors than ever before, so that's one town event we look forward to. I also want to congratulate Judy and Barry Nelson. They opened up their new facility for the Victory School this weekend. It was a grand opening, and it is beautiful. And they've worked very hard the last, it must be 15, 20 years, and it's something they really should be proud of. It really was impressive. One last thing about the beach. I'm sure many of the council got calls from people regarding the beach. Dr. Daly specifically called me and asked me just to go over his concerns, and they're most of the concerns that people have, and that is, one, beach cleanup; two, security on the beach; three, signs on the beach; four, the town's obligation to inform residents if a beach advisory is issued. And he was also concerned with the mosquito spraying on A1A. And I think that just about does it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rojas?
Just two quick things. One, I think the manager may or may not be mentioning, and it kind of goes along with what councilmember Luskin said about the chain link fences on the city perimeters of the property and how they just don't look very nice in connection with all the other nice improvements that we've made in the town. And the other thing is, to expand on the whole situation with the water in the beach, I was concerned about the intercoastal, and so I made a phone call to the agency that is in charge of putting out the advisories. And apparently, the, and this was something, I don't know if the town knew or not, but the advisory really was just for the beach side, as far as swimming in the intercoastal and stuff, that's fine. So, the residents might want to know. I didn't want to contaminate myself, so I made the phone call.
But you have to think, if the ocean's contaminated, you gotta think the intercoastal.
I know. I said, isn't that kind of a gray area? And in all honesty, he said he agreed. He said it is a gray area. We don't test as frequently there.
I think the intercoastal would be worse, if you want to know the truth.
I, well, that's why I made the phone call, and that's why the response that I got was kind of interesting.
And we agree with you on the fences, on the perimeters of town. Town manager and I are already in the process of looking to see what we can do on that aspect of it. All right? With that, thank you, council members. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to the town manager for his abbreviated report.
Mayor, fair warning. We haven't had a meeting in two months, so I do have an extensive report this evening. I know that you love it when I speak for hours on end. First, let me take a moment of personal privilege. I'd like to introduce my stepdaughter, who's in the audience today, who's Donnie Gojo, who's visiting us today. She's, wanna see what I do all day, so just a bit, a minute ago. Before we...
You might need to talk.
Before I go into what we did this summer, we're gonna spend a couple of minutes talking about streetlights, and I have Sean Kempel from Stantec here this evening to help answer any questions that you may have, hopefully very little questions. As you know, we entered into agreement with Florida Power and Light to install a streetlighting system based on an LED bulb. The council had an opportunity to evaluate some of the bulbs, or some of the options that we had available to us. We all decided collectively that the best fixture that we had is the fixture that we had selected, and we asked for that fixture to be the lowest of the color hues and the least of the intensities. This past summer, we've installed most, if not all, of the posts. I think there's 32 posts missing. How many? How many posts? We have 32 posts that we're missing and some heads, and we've installed most of the ones on Golden Beach Drive. I think the islands are where we're kind of, Sean, join us here at the podium, where we're falling short. And I'll tell you what happened immediately as we started installing... And I'll tell you what happened immediately as we started installing lights. The phone calls started flooding in. Um and as you know, when there's a single light by itself, it looks like a spotlight. It's almost like a flashlight pointing out. But what happened is other lights started to join that light, it started to wash out. Because now the illumination isn't a single spotlight, it now becomes a bleed. Uh there were residents that were crying that the lights were intense on both sides and and that they were being blinded in their homes. Um I personally came out here several nights and met with our residents and I, and I challenge you to do it tonight when you're leaving. You stand in front of the light. If the light is facing the street, that's its most intense portion. By by law, the light has to illuminate from back of walk to back of curb. It is on the west side. And from back of curb to back of walk, it is on the east side. So there's proper illumination for both the pedestrian traffic and our vehicular traffic. I can assure you that every single light is dimmer or less intense on the backside. And we'll, after the meeting tonight, we can go out there and I'll show you that. And so we've installed all of the lights that are currently functioning uh in that manner. After we take delivery of the system, so after FPNL is long gone and we accepted delivery and we've accepted our money from the state of Florida, we can make some minor adjustments to those fixtures. Is we're very limited in the type of adjustments that we can make, but we can make some adjustments. In addition to that, before FPNL leaves, if there's a fixture on your property, and 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 fair warning, residents who are watching tonight, not all of the lights are in between properties. In fact, ninety percent of the lights are not in between properties. We have designated a new design pattern for our community. And that design pattern calls for lights to be situated every several feet in a diagonal uh soldier course installation. Can we move a light that's in the middle of your driveway? Sure. But it won't be moved to the property line. We can move it to one side of the driveway or another side of the driveway. But please do not think that we can move them to the side of the property, because that will, that will break the distribution of light that we have. Why is that important? If the sidewalk or the street isn't properly illuminated, because we've moved the light and now we have an area where the the intensity of the light does not provide enough light for it to be safe and a resident or a visitor or someone who's looking to sue were to trip and get harmed and they see that we've changed the dynamics of the installation of the lights, we are now held liable for that. So I know that sometimes the aesthetic value is of concern to you. Reducing the town's exposure and liability is utmost importance to us. So it doesn't mean that I can't move a light five feet this way or four feet this way, but I cannot move a light fifteen feet or twenty feet this way or twenty feet that way. And I want that to be extremely clear this evening. No, we cannot change the intensity of the lights. These lights have a single LED fixture. This is the least intense of the LEDs that come with this light. And no, we cannot change the color. Yes, I agree. It's white and it's bright. It's different, but wait for the system to be installed. We have been accustomed to a yellow glow for eighty-nine years in Golden Beach. So once the system is in, you'll become accustomed to your beautiful new white glow. I challenge you, if you feel that the light is shining in your window, and I've I've asked the council to do this. There's a difference between being able to see light now outside of your window and a light coming through your window. There's a big difference between the two. So when you stand at your window and you see light, that's a good thing. You can see people who are walking by who probably shouldn't be there, or, you know, you'll see the friendly police officers doing their patrols. If the light is coming into your window, and how do you, how can you tell the difference, Alex? Easy, grab a piece of paper, hold it at the window, and if light is hitting it, light is coming through your window. But if no light is hitting it and you can just see that it's white, that means that it's bright outside. We now have a bright system. That is the design that we've chosen. That does not mean that later on, years from now, we can't change those fixtures. I'll remind the council and the residents that this system that we were taking delivery on is a three-million-dollar system of which we're responsible for an upfront cost of less than three hundred thousand dollars. And so the fixtures that we have are the fixtures that we're responsible, um and fiscally responsible for us to accept. Sean, am I missing anything?
Not at all. I was just to add, from a technical standpoint, you know, we look at photometrics, so you look at the readings of the amount of light you're getting. So that's part of what we, how we came up with our spacing. We wanted, as Alex said, a staggered spacing, a normalized spacing. So on one side of the road, it's it's on this side and it flips back and forth. From a technical standpoint, it does, might be hard to see, but it does have an irregular pattern. So more of the light is being thrown towards the road, much less of it is being thrown behind. We do, we've seen it before when there, there's areas where there was no light. It it used to be some of the spacing of poles was very frequent. Now we're we're normalizing that, so it is a little, it can be a little bit of shocking uh visual at first. Uh so patience is a good thing to see how it all comes together. Other than that, I will add that of the lights that have been installed, there are fifty-four of them are connected and working. They do still have another approximately seventy-eight that have to be connected and get them up and running. So they're in the process of doing that in the coming weeks.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so that that's our report on this, on the lighting project. And if you have any personal questions or issues at your home, please feel free to call our office. But like I mentioned earlier, the system is designed the way it is. Does anyone have any questions for Sean before he leaves?
I have one. If, once the the system's complete and you do your photometrics around and there are certain areas that might have excessive light um beyond what is needed for, I guess, candles per, is that they do-
Right, like foot candle levels, right, right.
To the extent that that it exceeds that, is there ways, like the shield, like I know that on one side, on the non-street side, you have a shield. On the other side, you don't. To the extent that the photometrics exceeds what is needed, is there ways to curb that? With it with, the same manager had told me he thought that it could, but I just wanna hear your thoughts on it.
Right, so it is, it's an FPL fixture, in, so inside the globe is directing more of the light out to the street. But they've told me that there, there could be a device, it would just have to be something aesthetically pleasing that would have to go-
Far separate when we get there.
On the outside. Right, it could be retrofitted. It might be on the outside. It might not look great. It's something we'd have to evaluate. But there are potential options.
Let me also just, real quick, uh Mayor, just thank Sean and Stantec for the work that they're doing this summer. They've been here as every single hole has been dug. Uh him and his company have been uh partners in this. Also, Alitha Pear and Frank, uh Frank's last name. Frank from FPL, you know who you are. Uh they've done phenomenal job. Give us a couple more weeks. We, I guarantee you this project will be delivered before the end of next month. Uh it won't go into the month of November. Uh we had a lot more crews in town today and we're excited to see them. Sean, thanks for waiting this evening.
No problem. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll try to go through my other items as quickly as possible. As you all know, this summer, we had quite a bit of activities. Um as the mayor mentioned, all of our CIP projects have been working aggressively to get them completed and delivered on time and under budget. And we're, we're pleased with the work that the staff has done. Major issues that you may have missed this summer that were important to our community, uh the seaweed. Seaweed is is here and it's gonna be here for quite some time. We have seen more seaweed come ashore in the last uh couple of months than in the last ten years combined. And we believe that a lot of that is a direct, direct result of the uh contaminations that are going into our waterways. It's causing uh that type of seaweed to die in the oceans, come along the shore of the ocean, um and then come onto our shore. We do not provide a seaweed management program. We rely on Miami-Dade County to do that for us. And I can tell you that they've been receptive every time we've called them to come and clean up the seaweed. And let me clarify what that means. Cleaning up the seaweed doesn't mean getting rid of the seaweed. They till it into the sand, so it's buried underneath the shoreline. Under a rare, true emergency, they'll come with uh bulldozers and remove the seaweed. Um but they haven't done that in Golden Beach. What they've done is just tilled it into our ground. So we'll continue to manage it. There's nothing that the city can do about it. When it dies, it smells. It smells really bad, rotten eggs and and sulfur. That's not what's causing the waters to be infected with bacteria, which leads us to our second issue. Um and this is important for our residents to understand and for our council to to understand. We do not have the local authority to shut down our beaches. Only the state of Florida Department of Health can shut down beaches or shut down waterways. So three years ago, when the county decided to not fund the Department of Health for water testing of the waters on a weekly basis, they decided to go to a monthly basis. We took the initiative to here in Golden Beach, and we're the only city in this area, 'cause I confirmed that we're Sunny House and Howland Beach today. We're the only city that pays separately to the Department of Health to get our waters tested weekly. Every Monday, they come and test our waters. And by every Wednesday afternoon, I get a report that lets me know whether our waters are safe or not. And we feel that that's extremely important. There are some times when our water levels are moderately high of bacteria, that although the state has not shut down the beach, we recommend ocean goers to maybe not go in the water. And how do we do that? We we do that by informing people who come to the beach at the lifeguard stand. We cannot issue an advisory for residents who live on the ocean, that their bacteria levels are high. Because that could get us into a little bit of a legal issue with the Department of Health. Because you're technically not supposed to close down our beaches. So what we do is we inform them the beaches has a moderate level. When the beaches are closed, so when we actually get the beach are closed, we do a code red. First of all, the onus falls on the state of Florida to give out that warning. So they have to issue the advisory first. And then they do so through the Herald, through the TV stations. We locally do a code red. We pass out flyers to every home o- ocean resident. We call the Ocean Boulevard residents. And now we have these new placards that we purchased that we put both on the north side, south side, and in the center of town that says Ocean, uh Beach closed, I believe. They're big red and they say, no swimming, Ocean- Water closed. So uh that's how we communicate. I know that our Ocean Boulevard residents would like for us to to notify them every time the water are are moderate. And we're not legally allowed to do that. Um they could call every Wednesday to the town and ask what the levels are this week, and that's something that we can do. Or we could start putting our water moderate levels on our website, so you can go on and see what the reading is for that week. Michael, let's start doing that. Um and that, so we could advise our residents to go there. They could see what the reading is, just like anyone else would. Why didn't we notify the public when Howland Beach showed, closed their beach? We can't. When a water testing level in another district reads high and ours are not high, we cannot close our beach. That's a comfort, that's a comfort issue. The issue is, if you, if you don't feel comfortable swimming in the water, the state of Florida's position is that so long as the bacteria levels in our area are safe for recreational activity, the beach remains open. And and that's how we have to advertise it.
Chances are, if Howlandale is closed, if the water is closed, then our beach is moderate. And we talked about this. I called you about it. At least, my feeling is hearing you tonight, if it's posted on the website that it's moderate, then someone who lives along the ocean, not just at the pavilion, can go on the website and make their own decision. As long as it's posted and there's a way for them to check on it, I'm good with it.
Okay.
But, you know, I think, I think our ocean residents deserve the courtesy to know that it's not closed, but it's funky, so to speak.
So there, there are jurisdictional issues, and so what we'll do is we'll start, every week, once we get our report, we'll just put on the, underneath the weather section, beach condition.
Great.
Moderate, whatever it is. So we'll start doing that. But that's the issues as it relates to the beach. Mosquitoes, mosquitoes, mosquitoes. We all saw the massive email that went to our community this past summer as it relates to the mosquito and our mosquito treatment. Know that this council authorized uh an increase in our mosquito budget last year so that we can offer an alternative pesticide to mosquito control. We use MERS two-point-oh. Um and MERS two-point-oh is a organic-based uh compound that treats mosquitoes. Um I've met with the residents. They were extremely agitated by the mosquito topic. And I believe that we've, we've, we've tried to calm some of their concerns. But know that we are using a organic-based pesticide as it relates to orga- or, not pesticide, compound as it relates to mosquito control, and that's the best that we can do for now. It is a dollars and cents issue. I can tell you that all of our neighboring communities are still using the non-organic base. And so if you believe in water tables and things flowing, you know, things flow. So um know that we did uh address a new compound as it relates to our mosquito spraying. Two-point-oh seems to be a recurring theme this evening. As we all know, there was an article this past summer as it relates to Golden Beach two-point-oh. And I wanted to just a- address it very briefly. This council has an obligation to protect the investments of our residents and their investments in this community. And it's my job to enforce the laws and ordinance of this community. Um I can tell you that we do not single out a single homeowner or a single uh lot. We try to apply the town's codes consistently. It is unfortunate that some of our homeowners are not responsible homeowners and do not take care of their properties. And we will continue to leverage every letter of the law that we can and every ordinance that we have to ensure compliance. What we do not wanna have is renegade homeowners who then have a negative impact on the value of our neighbors in our community. And so although the article was a little bit difficult to read at times, I think that the message is clear. Be a responsible homeowner and the town of Golden Beach will not have an issue with you. When you are an irresponsible homeowner, we're gonna go after you and ask you to maintain your property so that your neighbors um can protect their investments. With that said, that's the end of that issue for me. We have put out ocean, uh we did two things this summer. We staked both the high-water mark line and the property lines on the ocean. Uh in the coming weeks, we've had to change the verbiage on all of our signs. We had verbiage that was too aggressive and the state did not feel comfortable with it. So a word, um, one word different approximately to the water's edge is the change that we're gonna make. And so once we get those sign, what, those amendments, we're gonna post new signs at the property lines that lets our visiting community know, or visiting public know, where our private property ends and where state lands begin. As you know, this past summers, summer, uh Governor Scott was in the uh, in the papers a lot as it relates to the new law that was passed in July, or that was implemented in July as it relates to beach access. Golden Beach is still a, a private beach. We ask any beach goers to just laterally traverse along the state's waterline. Our police officers will always ask our, our visitors to just continue to move along. And we'll continue to apply the same rules that we applied in June, we'll continue to apply. And if you have any questions as to what that means, see, see me privately. Just know that nothing has changed in Golden Beach as it relates to our enforcement of our beach and our privacy on our beach. We did have two big fires, well, not big, we had two, we had two fires in town this summer. And this is extremely important that our residents realize that part of being a homeowner is being responsible and checking the maintenance of your equipment and your facility. In such a corrosive environment, both fires this, this summer occurred because of electrical panels or electrical fixtures that weren't being maintained. So we've launched a new program. If you want the town to go out and look at all of your exterior lighting and your exterior fixtures, we will do so at no cost to you. And if you need to repair uh outlets or lights and 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 panels and all kinds of electrical components, we're waiving all the permit fees. Now, this doesn't mean go out and improve your system. This is a replace like-for-like. We waive the permit fees. But we want our homeowners to do an inspection of all of your exterior lighting, all of your exterior outlets, because you could have a fire. And in fact, we had two of them. One was a garage fire and the other one was a boat fire because the socket where the village pump was plugged into had a faulty connection. Actually, you had to all rot it away. So know that we have launched that new program. We ask all of our residents to contact the building department for those inspections. Um Mayor, that was a long-winded discussion um and report. We've had a very busy summer. We hope that you have enjoyed your summer break um and know that um we're here to serve. Mayor, um if it's okay with you, I don't think we're gonna have any issues with the taser issues or the, or the cars tonight, right? So I can let the police go home? They've all been waiting for that.
Yeah, they can go home.
Go home. Thank you.
Are they waiting on?
I think so.
They just love it here.
We'll take care of you. Thank you for taking care of us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Thank you, town manager. Town attorney.
No reports. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item number K, ordinance is second reading. There are none. Item number L, ordinance is first reading. There are none. Item number M, quadra resolution. Resolution. There are none this evening. Under consent agenda, the following uh seven items are on the consent agenda. Item number N-one, official meeting of the April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen special town council meeting. Item number two, official meeting of the April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen executive session. Item number three, official minutes of the two, April seventeenth, excuse me, two thousand and eighteen regular town council meeting. Item number four, official meeting of the May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen local planning agency hearing. Item number five, official meeting of the April fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen regular uh town council meeting. Item number six, a resolution to town council authorizing a joint project agreement with FDOT and TURF for landscaping maintenance. Item number N-seven, a resolution to town council authorizing a donation of eight hundred dollars to the Cardina Foundation. Those seven items on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item one through seven and item number N passes on the consent agenda. Item number O, town resolution, a resolution to town council ratifying the maximum proposed millage rate for the year-end two thousand and- For the year end two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida. Ratifying the maximum proposed military rate for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. That was transmitted to the property appraiser of Miami-Dade County pursuant to the requirements of Florida statutes. And the rules and regulations of the Department of Revenue of the state of Florida and providing for an effective date.
I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I need a second. Okay, a little background on this. Uh, this year, Golden Beach experienced a five point eight percent growth in taxable values. Resulting in over a seventeen million dollar uh, worth of new construction. And forty-two million dollars, uh, in excess of forty-two million dollars growth in home values. Setting our preliminary taxable values at a billion ninety-five million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Up from uh, a billion thirty-five last year. As such, in maintaining a responsibility tax rate, we are recommending that the town of Golden Beach. Holds a combined property tax rate of eight point four mils for every hundred dollar uh, valuation. And that will include seven point four eight operating mills. Of which ninety-five percent will generate seven point seven million uh, for the general fund budget. Which is four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars more than the current fiscal year. With our adverb portion of the operating budget was approved at seven million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. However, for the budgeting process, we will only budget seven point two six. Restricting the twenty-two mils of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand and fourteen thousand dollars. For non-recurring uh, general operating purposes. Uh, so it's important to show uh, the breakdown. So the general fund will be seven point four eight uh, zero zero, which is no increase in prior year. To cover the debt service, it's point nine two oh oh, same as last year. Uh, no increase in that. So it's a combined millage rate of eight point four four. So uh, I believe this is our fifth year. That uh, there'll be no uh, there, there, there's not an increase in, in millage rate. In fact, in the last seven years, we've had two.
Mayor, you said eight point four fours, eight point four oh.
Excuse me, eight point four oh, uh, the combined millage rate. So uh, Alex, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, Mayor, before we, we adopt this, I, I have Michael Glidden uh, in the off, in, in the audience. And I just wanted uh, to give Michael a quick chance. You know, part of this, part of this millage process, um, what we're doing enhancing new programs for our residents. Next year's budget has a lot of emphasis on services directly to our residents. And so uh, I want Michael just briefly uh, touch on some of the things that we're doing. Uh, to enhance our quality of, of communication and our interaction with our residents. Um, as you know, once you set the millage rate, you can only go down from it. You can't go up from it. Um, and so I just wanna make sure that he highlights some of the things, exciting things that we're gonna do next year. Michael.
Mayor, Council, Town Staff, um. I just wanted to speak a little bit about what we're working on as far as Resident Services Department. Um, this is a new department this year. Uh, we're coming into our second year with fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Um, and what we've been working on doing is bringing up our communication skills and being able to interface more directly with residents. Um, my department has been tasked with putting together a resident guidebook. Um, for the residents, which we're, we've been working on for the past several months. Um, we're getting to the point where we've begun beta testing the book. Um, the book will be a comprehensive guide for both new residents and old residents, uh, unliving in town. Um, basic information will be included, um. Everything from rules and regulations within town to the perks of being a resident in Golden Beach and some of the services that the town offers. Um, even being in the meeting here tonight, I'm seeing that there's some information that we'll need to add. Dealing with the water situation, how to best uh, manage a prod, uh, manage that, that process. Um, and as the town manager said, certain elements of that will come through my department. Case management, making sure that we're resolving situations in a timely manner and a satisfying manner to our residents. Um, we'll also be introducing some new social programming, which will be continued uh, throughout the two thousand and eighteen, through that, two thousand and nineteen year. Um, we did s- uh, uh, some teen events during spring break. We also did the same for um, summer programming. So we're gonna introduce more elements like that. And we hope to introduce programming that'll address all residents' concerns, different demographics. Uh, and if there's anything that residents are, need or um, feel that they're not experiencing through the town that we might be able to help out with. Uh, my department is here and, and my door is always open.
Mayor, the reason I wanted Michael to kinda share that with you this at, this evening before you set the millage rate. Is, you know, if the council feels during the budget process that there's other services that we can offer. Um, as you noticed, uh, we set aside close to five hundred and six thousand dollars in next year's budget for you to allocate for, for programming. Next year's budget, the primary focus of next year's budget is, is working with our residents as we celebrate our ninetieth anniversary. Um, we think that setting the millage rate at eight point four mils is consistent with, with our objectives and our goals. It also sets aside some money for our new capital programs that we're looking forward to implementing over the next five years. And so a favorable on this, a favorable vote on this item is always appropriate.
Right, I, I have to, uh, a- again, that's the fifth year that the town has kept the millage rate at eight point four. We've uh, had no increase in our millage rate since two thousand and seven. In fact, since that time, we've lowered the millage rate uh, two different times. So uh, again, hats off to the town manager and his staff for doing a great job on the budget. Uh, and affording us to increase our uh, services to the residents. And at the same time, keeping our tax structure the same. So with that, uh, any comments? Public? Uh, roll call, please. Thank you, Michael.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Councilmember Leskin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Perfect. And next council meeting, we will go over the budget and we'll ratify and.
Yeah, Mayor, that's important.
Ratify the uh, the uh, eight point four.
I know I need to stop talking, but just real quick for the residents, it's important to know that we have two budget hearings. The first one is September twelfth at seven PM. It's a Wednesday night, not a Tuesday night. So it's important for our residents to know that. It's a Wednesday night, not a Tuesday night, September twelfth. At seven PM, we're not trying to be sneaky. We're not trying to do anything funny. It's just that it's the high Jewish holidays during this time of the month. And so we're trying to observe all of the Jewish holidays and respect the county and the school board meetings, which is required by state law. So the first one is Wednesday, September twelfth at seven PM. The second one, now we're gonna throw another curve ball out there. The second budget hearing, which will also be your business meeting for the month of September, is held on Thursday, September twenty-seventh. That's Thursday, September twenty-seventh at seven PM. A reminder to the council members, the first meeting is not mandatory, but the second one, we're required to have a, a um, of. All members present, because this millage rate does require a unanimous vote of all members. Not just members, uh, all members. So again, that's Wednesday, September twelfth and Thursday, September twenty-seventh at seven PM.
The twelfth one's optional. Okay, which is where you have to be there, the second one. Moving right along to item number nine, a resolution of town council awarding a comprehensive health insurance plan. For the employees at a town of Golden Beach.
A resolution of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, awarding a comprehensive health insurance plan. For the benefit of the town of Golden Beach employees and eligible dependents, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to approve. I need a second.
Mayor, I'll keep it, I'll keep it brief, but just know that we're not just rubber stamping processes here. So this summer, and I don't know where Destiny is, Destiny and the town clerk really worked on looking at offerings that other cities in our area are providing to their employees. We actually looked at, um, and it's in, and it's in your council packet. We looked at all the neighboring cities plus more. Uh, to make sure that we're being competitive in our offerings. And we then shopped within the league's uh, cities insurance program. To make sure that we're offering the best program at the best cost to our, to our, to our residents. Um, we are offering two insurances this year, a Plan Three and a Plan One. The Plan One is a buy-up plan. That means that if the employees wish to take advantage of Plan One, they have to pay for the difference between Plan Three and Plan One, one hundred percent out of pocket. We are gonna do the same thing that we did this year. We are gonna, we're gonna execute a contract for Plan Three. However, we're going to self-fund the coverage of Plan Two. What does that mean? That means that if in Plan Two, there's a ninety percent out of pocket, and in Plan Three, there's an eighty percent out of pocket, we will reimburse our employees at ten percent. Last year, the savings in Plan was thirty thousand dollars and we only had three thousand dollars in self-funding, or, or self-underwriting. We're gonna offer that again to our employees. We think it's in the best interest of the, of the town. And in addition to that, Plan Three this year had a two point five eight percent decrease to the pre. Two point eight four per, uh, decrease to the premiums. That additional savings uh, goes back to the town. So with that, Mayor, we recommend. Uh, that you pass this item favorably. And Destiny, thank you for the work that you did in comparing all those other cities this past summer.
Does anyone have any questions on insurance? Close to the council, public. Hey, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Councilmember Leskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving right along. Item number ten, a resolution to town council. Renewing the agreements for the dental and the vision insurance for the employees at a town of Golden Beach.
A resolution of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, renewing the agreements for a dental insurance and a vision insurance plan. For the benefit of the town of Golden Beach employees and eligible, eligible dependents, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
I need a motion to approve.
Mayor, no increases. We're staying with the same plan.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Councilmember Leskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving to item number eleven, a resolution of town council accepting the benefit proposal for the insurance submitted by Mutual Omaha Insurance.
A resolution of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, accepting the benefit proposal. For short, short-term, long-term disability insurance, life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance. Submitted by Mutual of Omaha Insurance, providing for conditions, providing for implementation, providing for an effective date.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I need a second. Uh, Town Manager?
Uh, ditto. I mean, same thing, no rate increases.
No, there was decrease.
Uh, de- there was a decrease in this item. A, a diminished uh, decrease.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Councilmember Leskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Item number twelve, a resolution of town council authorizing use of LETF monies for the purchase of taser stun guns.
A resolution of the town of Golden Beach, Town Council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida. Authorizing the use of law enforcement trust funds, LETF monies. To provide for acquisition and training of taser stun guns per collective bargaining agreement. Providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Any a motion to approve?
Mayor, before you do that, the attorney needs to read a change in the item on page two.
Um, page two, section two, uh, there's a revision. Section two will now read the expenditure of authorized LETF funds. That the use of LT, LETF funds for the purchase of tasers for all law enforcement officers is hereby authorized and approved. Uh, that's revised section two as uh, provided on the uh, website and on the dais.
Okay, instead of twenty-five units, aren't we buying, uh?
We're still, you're giving us authority to buy twenty-five and we'll only purchase those that, for officers who qualify.
Do they have to be tased themselves?
A motion is always appropriate.
Any a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Okay. No.
No.
They used to, but not anymore.
They still have to qualify to carry the taser. And the chief is well versed on this issue, but let me just summarize it real quick. If you don't qualify, you can't carry it. The voltage on the tasers is less than the voltage in an AED machine. And they have to follow all of our policies and procedures that are, um, that are approved by FDLE. In addition to that, these are smart tasers. So if someone's using their tasers to play around, we get a report every month that knows how many times they've clicked that taser. Right? So we will know if a taser was used, whether it be at home playing around with their family or whoever. Or if it was actually used in the uh, in, in performing their duties. Uh, we get a report, it'll let us know. And if we see any abuse as it relates to the use of that particular uh, tool, uh, we'll curb that, that misbehavior. Did I get it right, chief?
Yes, sir.
Don't they have to get reset once they're shot?
No. It's a battery. So the charge has to get charged again.
Any comments? Judy will volunteer to be tasered.
I'm really scared of them. They look awful. I think I'd rather be shot in the ankle. They just, I don't, I see them on television.
Then I'll try it for you. I'll show it doesn't hurt that much.
Amy Singletary.
Oh my god.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Leskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Our attention spans of two hours. And once we go beyond that, we get silly.
Oh, wait till all the motions that I have coming now that you guys are tired.
Item number thirteen, resolution of town council authorizing the purchase of five Chevy Tahoe police fleet vehicles.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida. Authorizing the purchase and equipping of five Chevrolet Tahoe police patrol vehicles. And the use of general funds to purchase and equip, equip these vehicles, providing for implementation, providing for an effective date.
Roll call, I mean, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Mayor, these items are funded out of next year's budget. What we're asking is permission to preorder them so we can pay for them once they get here out of next year's budget, but we don't want the rates to go up.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Councilmember Leskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number fourteen, a resolution of town council authorizing the purchase of two Chevy Tahoe administrative police vehicles.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida. Authorizing the purchase and equipping of two Chevrolet Tahos administrative police vehicles. And the use of general funds to purchase and equip these vehicles, providing for implementation, providing for an effective date.
I need, uh, motion to approve.
Mayor, the, Mayor, this item just replaces two administrative vehicles in our current fleet.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Councilmember Leskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Resolution of town council awarding a milling and resurfacing contract to Behar Construction, Inc.
A resolution of.
Title first.
Okay.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida approving a proposal from Behar Construction, Inc. For renovation of the town's beach facilities pursuant to section two dash, two seven, five subsection three of the town's code of ordinances. Providing for implementation, providing for authorization, and providing for an effective date.
The only revision we have there is to section five authorization to fill in the dollar amount. So the. Section will read, the town manager is authorized to enter into an agreement with the contractor. That is consistent with the proposal and an amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Subject to the approval of the town attorney as to form content and legality.
Town manager and mayor.
Subject to the approval of the town manager, mayor, and town attorney?
Yes.
Is that a revision accepted by this, uh, first, is that a friendly amendment accepted by the first and the second? Oh, we don't have motions yet, sorry.
To approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? Uh, Alex, you wanna say anything on that?
Sure. So uh, when we delivered the CI, the, the projects at the strand, um, we haven't milled our asphalt, the, the west lot, the east lot. Um, or the strand area. So this is a small milling and resurfacing project. We did go out and get two proposals. Um, both from Southeast Engineering, who does most of the milling work in town, and Eddie, or, and Benny Bajar from Bajar Construction. Um, we're asking the count, the town council authorize this. Uh, going out to bid, in a formal bid process, would be more costs associated. You have to do an advertisement in the newspaper, you have to get bid documents, selection committee. So I'm asking you to waive a competitive bid, because it's impractical to bid, um, and award this contract for fifty-three, four, twenty-six.
Which was less than southeastern.
Correct.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Leskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Item number sixteen, a resolution town council authorizing the sale of one surplus police vehicle.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida. Authorizing the sale of one surplus police vehicle from the town's vehicle fleet, providing for implementation, providing for an effective date.
Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
As we start to take delivery of the vehicles, we'll start surplusing a lot of the vehicles. Our goal is to surplus all of the explorers and keep all of the existing Tahos. We have seven explorers that we're gonna surplus over the next couple of months.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Councilmember Rojas?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Leskin?
Yes.
And moving it right along, thank you. Uh, to discussion items, uh, direction of the town manager. First is the, under my uh, agenda, possibility requirements of a certificate of reoccupancy at a sale of property. Attention. So uh, this is only a discussion item and it could go either way. Uh, the town manager and I were thinking, uh, different ways, obviously, where we can protect. Do two things. One is protect uh, the home values of the town. And also at the same time, look for other revenue sources uh, for the town of Golden Beach. And uh, one thing that came to mind is that. I thought that prior to a closing in a property. in a property, a transfer of ownership, meaning a sale of a property or a purchase of a property, that the owner would be requ- required to have an inspection, uh, done at his premises, at the new, at the house before the sale, before the sale would be approved. And that would do two things. One, to make sure that no work was done without any permits to protect the town. And the second was that, uh, with that, we could charge a one-time fee of twenty-five-hundred dollars per transfer per residence. We have on an average of ten homes that transfer ownership during a year. It's additional twenty-five thousand dollars for the town. It's really not gonna make a difference to the homeowner or the buyer. It's a small dollar amount, it's twenty-five-hundred dollars. But at the same time, it's not, we're not doing this for, uh, strictly for revenue. But at the same time, what it's doing is protecting the homeowners, the surrounding homeowners, to make sure that no work was done to the resident prior to, uh, the transfer of ownership. And if work was done, and we find out there was work, we can require the new owner or the prior owner to get the proper permits and to make sure that everything was done properly. Again, there's pros and cons to do this. Town manager and I were just talking about it. It's a discussion item. Uh, it's, it's not, uh, edged in stone. It's not something that needs to be done. It's just a, a little food for thought that possibly, over the next few council meetings, we could discuss further. But I think it's, uh, it's a possibility for, uh, the town. Like I said before, two, two different reasons. One is to protect the town, okay, and make sure work doesn't get done. And this way, residents know that, so residents will not, it'll deter a resident from doing work without getting a permit. Because they knew, know when they do sell their property, that they are gonna get caught.
I actually think it's a good idea.
And someone's gonna have to pay for, you know, the permits not being, uh, not being applied for. And two, again, it's additional money for the town that the town can use for different projects, for improving the town, whether it be-
For covering the costs associated with that type of work.
Plus, the new resident moving in knows that they're, that they're moving into something that is at least, as best as we can tell, structurally sound.
Right, it's not a profit center. What it is, is, like the town manager said, it's, again, covering the costs to implement this project.
You know, since those two fires, I think doing things like, uh, waiving the, the fees for the permits and what we're talking about now, I think it's an excellent idea.
I, I personally am against it. Um, I spoke with Alex, uh, for a long time about it. Um, I feel like there's enough taxes that are being hit on Golden Beach residents. I think if Golden Beach residents realize that whenever they sell their house, they're gonna be taxed automatically with a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fi- fee. Um, I just think that that is something that, uh, our residents would not want. Um, Alex and I had talked about different other reasons for it, um, which I don't, I think, and he made some other valid reasons for certain things, but I thought this was kind of overkill in terms of what it affected.
Well, who pays it, the buyer or the seller?
Negotiable.
It would be the seller.
I, I agree with Councilmember Bernstein. I think that, you know, first of all, it puts the onus on the, the, the buyer already is gonna do a home inspection. They're a responsible buyer.
Yeah, but the buyer is, and again, I'm not, it's not edged in stone, but the buyer doesn't know whether you did work without a permit. If I redid my kitchen, you're not gonna ask me if I did, did it with a permit.
But if the buyer, if the buyer's taking the house and wants to, wants to renovate or wants to demolish, he's gonna then, we're now adding on fees that are gonna disappear.
That's a good point. If they're demolishing it, that's an excellent point.
And I think that, you know, one of the things that we talked about is after a developer, um, builds and gets a C O, that they might turn around and add on a lot of different extra things. And maybe, maybe it's something that if you own the house for less than, like, if, if you're a resident, maybe it doesn't apply, and maybe if it's just for sale and is to prevent developers from adding on a lot of inset, extras after they get the CFO, I, I can appreciate that type of position where we, we look at it from that perspective of, um, a mandatory type of review. But I just don't see how residents who've been living here for a long time are gonna want it.
Again, it's a discussion item, it's a thought. You bring up some good points.
No, you did bring up good points, I didn't think of.
You know, again, just food for thought, think about it. And, uh, we'll bring it back in the next council meeting, just to discuss any further. If it, if it needs to be discussed further, if it, if it's a dead mute item, it can, it be a mute item.
Mayor, if it's okay with you, in the meantime, we'll task the town's attorneys to see what kind of, what kind of programs would be available to be. There, there are certain, so, the state of Florida has a lot of restrictions as to what we can and cannot do in this particular subject matter. So what I'd like is for Kathy and, and Steve to work on. If we wanted to roll out something similar to, to what you're describing, could we do it, how could we do it, how could we implement it? Knowing that the, this cost associated would be to cover the costs associated with the building department and code enforcement-related activities, because this type of inspection could only cover those costs. Um, and what would be the benefit of doing so? And what, and then, in addition to that, what would be the town's exposure for doing so?
But I, I don't wanna waste anyone's time or money. If the, if the, uh, council is, eh, eh, is against it, adamantly against it, then it's a, a mute point, we don't even need to do it. I mean, if, if you think that it's a, a, a bad idea, then, then I wouldn't even do the research.
Well, what I, I'd like to do is in order for us to come back with you and be able to be competently skilled in, in the subject matter, so we can have a discussion at the next meeting, li- like them for this, not a lot of money, not a lot of time, just kinda give us a, a brief, this is what you can or cannot do, because if not, we're just gonna have the same discussion again.
No, then we, it's a mute, then it's dead. I mean, if, if they're against it, and they don't think it's a good idea, if Councilman Rojas is against it, Councilman Bernstein-
Right now, there's a, right now, there's a tie, so Councilman Medel would be the, the, the-
And again, I'm not adamantly for this, it was just you and I were brainstorming.
Or there's not a tie.
Right, and we thought about, we thought, we thought it would be a good idea. So if you wanna do minimum research and come back to it, that's fine.
And I only felt the way I did, 'cause I truthfully just looked at it as a safety net.
And it's a dead issue.
But maybe there's more narrow ways under which you can find, because you made, when we discussed it, Alex, you made some excellent points on certain things, but I just don't think globally to hit everybody with that fee.
Well, it's not everyone, it's just that, on the transfer ownership, yeah. But if it's, it's a bad idea, it's a bad idea.
Let's hear from the town's attorney.
There, there is some, some, a basic baseline in, on that fee. And that is that that fee, A, can only be used to cover your costs. So it can be no more than your actual costs, and then it goes directly to, um, the implementation of that program. So it's not necess, and we don't have the ability, um, under state law to impose, uh, different types of taxes or, or fees beyond that and, for the transfer. Um, but that inspection fee has to be directly related to your costs.
So why, why don't we drop it for now? Town manager, I'll make a suggestion. Let's drop it for now, think about it, and if we think it's important down the road, we can bring it back, and then you can do the research. But I don't wanna waste your time or money, uh, to do it, so let's just drop it for now. And, you know, if we think of some other ideas, we could do that. So again, it was just a little food for thought. So with that, uh, the only left thing is the town manager, uh, has, uh-
Mayor, Mayor and Council, this is impor, this is important. Um, so it's not too often that your building advisory board takes action, uh, directing staff or the county, or asking the staff, the council to look into something. So the B R A B, as well as many residents, have come to our offices lately. Uh, the B R A B at the last meeting actually directed us to do so. Um, they feel that the type of homes that are being built in town um, is a result of our change in our ordinance a couple of years back. Uh, so these modern square homes that were seen, uh, throughout town, they feel that the code dictates that type of a style